Welcome everyone to Rest and Association's special meeting of the Board of Directors for November the 3rd, 2022. You see a new face this evening opening the meeting. I'm the Vice President and our President has asked me to chair the meeting for logistics reasons, but also just want to note that she is here with us tonight as well. And seeing quorum, in fact, I believe I see all of our board members here this evening. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. This evening, we are hosting a special meeting to discuss some land use issues with our council and also speak specifically to the recent PZA hearing related to Barton Hill. So most of the meeting will be conducted in executive session, but there are some actions that the board may wish to take post-executive session for anyone who wants to stick around or view the recording later. With that, I will ask my board members for a motion to call the meeting to order. Or to approve the agenda for our meeting, sorry about that.
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you both. With that, we will move on to member comments.
You need to take a vote, ma'am.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. All those in favor of the agenda as set forth? Please say aye, raise your hand. Mike and Laurie. Okay, Laurie, you're good too. Sarah, not seeing faces or hearing eyes, but without objection, I'm going to call that unanimous. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is member comments. I believe I see at least one member here with us. Do we have any pre-registered comments from members, Chalise?
No, we don't have any pre-registered comments.
Okay, seeing one RA member on my screen. Jeremy, I'm going to ask you to unmute and see if you have a comment.
Yes. I think I'm unmuted.
You are unmuted. We do hear you.
I don't have a camera.
That's okay. If you could just state your name and address for the record or type your address to our board liaison account to verify you're a member. Although you're my next door neighbor, so I'm pretty sure you're a member and I recognize your voice. If you could go ahead and state your name and an address. And then you'll have three minutes for a comment.
All right, Jeremy Novak, 2005 Halyard Lane. My comments, I know it's a little late from the last meeting about the fees for the lake. Mostly it's, I think that having, increasing the boat fees 35% in one year is a little excess since the rest of the fees for any Rest and Association activities are much less than that or no increase at all. So I think that shouldn't be increased by 35%. Maybe 10 or 15% is something reasonable to increase the boat fees. Secondly, there seems to be a lot of comments in the board in what was written for the budget last year about having the people who live on lakes pay for a great deal more of the cost of the lakes. One thing that most people don't know, and I'm sure although the board knows, is that Lake Thoreau was dredged a couple of years ago and 100%, that's 100% of the dredging was done for off-lake drainage. Each of the dredging was done in front of each of the inlets on each of the areas around the lake. And none of the dredging was for dredging that was needed for the lake. The only dredging that was needed for Lake Thoreau that was for individuals was arranged through the dredging company directly and paid for directly from the individual to the dredging company. I just want to remember, remind the board that between with the off-lake drainage coming into the lake and somewheres around 85 to 90% of the off-lake of the pollution in the lake is coming from off-lake sites that considering that, I've been proposing that the people on the lake pay for a great deal more, the cost is not fair because most of the cost for the lake is from off-site drainage, off-site use of the lake. Thank you very much for your listening.
Thank you, Jeremy. Although those are not topics for tonight's meeting, I'm sure the board members will note them for our next budget session going into November. So appreciate those. I am not seeing any other members online, so unless our board members have member comments, I will ask our board liaison to take us into executive session for most of the majority of the meeting. I will ask for a motion from the board to go into executive session to consult with council on land use matters.
So move.
Do I hear a second? John, second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And with that, I will ask our board liaison to take us into executive session.
Okay, we, the board is back from executive session and I will entertain a cleansing motion, please.
Madam Vice President. I move that the board certify that the only matters discuss an executive session were those described in the motion to enter executive session.
Second, second from Lori, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, do I have any motion requests from the board? Okay, um, then I have one. That I would like to. Sorry, I have too many papers here. Because I have it written down. Motion to direct the CEO to work with staff and the fiscal committee to review the capital budget using advice from council post BZA decision. And provide recommendations on adjustments, the capital budget at the next meeting.
At the next fiscal meeting or?
At the next board meeting, November the seventeenth is our next board meeting. Any seconds? Okay, any other? Wishes to throw, John?
Madam Vice-
And with the fees not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Second. Okay, discussion by the board.
Madam Vice President, can we get a recommendation from staff as whether or not they agree with this motion?
Sorry, John, can we have a discussion first?
Well, I'm, I was asking for their recommendation. We can always have discussion, Director Small.
Staff recommendation and then Glenn, I believe you want to discuss, so you'll go next.
Staff recommendation and then Glenn, I believe you want to discuss, so you'll go next.
We have staff recommendation, John is saying.
Right, yeah, staff recommendation first, Mac, Larry. Chris.
Why don't I go ahead and start? I think, and I guess I'll just mention here, there's a BGC meeting in five minutes. And I'm not sure of the nature of what has to happen relative to public meetings on that. So just from a time check logistical standpoint, to put that on your radar screen. Running the meeting, Jennifer.
Yeah, we'll ask Tony to.
Okay. You know, I think there's a number of things that are coming downhill here relative to. Precedental value of where you're at and how you'd like to move forward. I think from a business standpoint. Issues around lighting and the impact on the community are the main subject of what's been discussed. And whether or not to continue moving forward with this particular litigation. The main business concern that I see coming relates to applicability going forward to other kinds of site improvements and potential costs to. The community, the membership and the organization. There could be significant expenses incurred in moving forward with this. It's our belief that, that, that those are monies that don't need to be spent at this point. And we think that the ability to look at other site improvements and work with the county. On quote unquote exceptions or minor site improvements for things other than lighting is still strong. And so as we talk to counsel, you know, our advice to you moving forward, you've already decided not to put in lights at Barton Hill. We're not sure that advancing with this litigation at this time makes the most business sense. Now, having said that. If, if the value system of the board is that future lighting, lighting as its own separate topic, is that important to you all? You know, then there would be, that, that's a value system that you'll all need to decide amongst yourselves. But generally speaking, we think now would be an okay time to, to walk away.
Larry or Chris, do you have any follow up comments?
I would, I would just agree with Mac, you know, when I, when Mark originally produced the rough estimate of fees. To pursue it to the next level. It was considerably higher than the motion that Director Farrell made. And I guess, and Mr. Farrell and I had a conversation and I'm, was generally not in favor in proceeding. Frankly, if it can be capped at forty, you know, again, it's really up to the board to decide if that is a well spent forty. I don't know if it can be done.
When you say it can be done, what do you mean? You mean, you don't believe it can be done for forty?
I mean, I've never done this and you know, we've got Mark here. You know, if you can get all the way through that process. And limit, you know, all those fees to forty, I just don't know if it's possible.
Larry, you're saying, Larry, you're saying if it can be done for forty, you would like to do it. Is that what you're saying?
Ah, you're unmuted.
I'm muted too quickly. Yeah, I mean, I, I would support it if we could. Keep it, keep it to that level because the initial numbers that were put forward to the board were considerably higher than that.
Hey, Chris, any follow up?
Uh, no, I kind of reiterate with what Larry said, and also, you know, my concern moving forward is just needing clear direction to then execute as I need to. And my also other concern too is that if we decide to kind of let this lapse as it is. That, you know, in the event of there, of another contentious project comes around that this could potentially use as a roadblock. Um, you know, if it doesn't come up initially with these, with a permit filing. And it could still then come up another way. So that's just my, my concern on that front.
Thank you. Glenn, I believe you were next.
Mike had his hand up for a while.
Oh, I think. It, it's related to the staff recommendation. So if, if that's all right, Glenn, you don't mind, I, and I think it'll be fast.
Okay.
Thank you, Glenn, thank you. Go ahead, Steph, are there any other projects in our pipeline or in sort of the. Grand vision, let's say, where we want to put lights on tennis courts? Or is this kind of it right now?
You want me, I'll jump in, Chris. Right now we have no, no other plans to light courts. We have light replacements, you know, switching out, but they're existing on the facilities. I think where it comes into play. Is not so much on tennis courts, but other facilities that we might want to light for, for nighttime use. Yeah, again, I use the, you know, pool lights perhaps. And of course, county code requires those for night use. So it becomes kind of an interesting conundrum, I guess. And then the pathway lights is an example I use as well. So, Chris, I don't know if you've got others that you. Out, out further.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of lighting, it's none of, like I said, none off the top of my head, except those two examples you gave, but that can't be said that it's something else. You know, with further evaluation could come up that would be in the same boat.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Sorry, Glenn, thank.
Okay, so I think the decision we have before us is to we. File a circuit court motion, you know, or case to appeal zoning decision from Fairfax County. That was weird. Okay, so my opinion is that. Uh, we don't need to do anything and the, the, the lights for Barton Hill have already been voted down. Lights are not the same as bench or trash can or a gazebo. So the now, analysis that we did in our appeal back in July. Equating those things, we're, we're not, we're not good. So we're not going to get, if we, even if we file the circuit court appeal, we, we spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or whatever it's going to be. We're not going to get to the outcome that we think we want, which is Fairfax County is going to say. God bless you guys, you could just do lights wherever you want. Because in the past, you guys did lights at another field. So you can just do lights wherever you want. That's not ever going to happen. I don't think that's ever going to happen anywhere in the United States. So I think we need to like shut down this appeal, need to be very sensible. And I think the fact that the county is weighing in is a signal to us that we need to be smart about how we're doing next. Improvements. So for example. If something has lights and shines in people's bedroom windows. That is a signal that it probably needs to go through a process. If there's going to be noise, we, we probably need to think about that. It, it doesn't seem to me that spending another hundred eighty to a hundred twenty thousand dollars. Is, is worth it because we're not going to get what we think we're going to get. I would argue. If there's any association in the United States that has the ability to put lights wherever they want. As a matter of an accessory structure. I would like to know who that is. The county makes very good points and they're written comments, which is details matter. So it matters what we bring to the county. What is the specific thing? We're putting in a hot tub, putting in whatever we're putting in. That all matters and all will depend on what. Requires a plan or not a plan. And I would say in, in terms of the answers that we got from the lawyer on. Well, one of the questions is how do we know what to do? Well, one thing is there's a written law that says. It spells out there's benches, gazebos, et cetera. Well, we know those are approved. If we don't know, we can ask the Fairfax County. Is this approved or not approved? We can proceed through that process. And finally. RA has spent a lot of money over the years on things and this process, much as we don't like it. The Fairfax County process is a, as a way of a checking us to make sure we're doing things correctly. If we, uh, it, it will, it will give us a good check to see, are we doing this right? So. For all those reasons, I would say we should not appeal this. It's a waste of money. And we should just move on and select our battles more wisely next time.
Uh, Erwin?
I have one question. Are, are the lights, uh, which are part of the. Redo or repurposing of the ball field in Hunter's Point, Hunter's Woods. Is that past the point at which the zoning administrator can raise an objection and call and say that we need a PRC plan?
There are no lights associated with the Hunter's Woods ball field renovation.
It's the pathway.
It's the pathway adjacent to it.
Isn't that part of the project?
No.
It's a separate project.
It is a separate project.
Is that far enough along so that no objections can be raised?
No. No, but again, as I said earlier, it has the full support of. Pretty much everybody except I think I, a couple of neighbors that I've heard from that don't live all too close to it.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
John?
No, I was just going to point out, all it takes is one neighbor to file one objection and we're off to the races. Which effectively is what happened here. One neighbor asked the zoning administrator for determination. And we were off to the races. So it only takes one.
Um, I would like to point out that, uh, one of the things I think we need to remember is that. Uh, you know, Rust Association was essentially founded because. The PRC was created and exists and, and gifted these facilities and. And, and that, that PRC ordinance is very different and very much special. In comparison to the rest of how Fairfax County does their zoning. Um, and we need to remember that, um, as an association, plan residential community. Means that it, it's not a residential zoning, it's not an industrial zoning, it's not a commercial zoning. This zoning was created. For Reston. Um, and we need to take into consideration that defending that PRC is something that Rust Association. Has taken up, um, in the past and we should be asking ourselves in this situation, is the PRC something that. RA should be defending? Any other questions or comments, um, before we take a vote? Okay, so just to remind us, we are voting. On a motion to move the case forward to circuit court with legal fees not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Clear on that? Yes, Margaret?
I believe John's motion said forty five thousand. Correct me if I'm wrong, John.
Yeah, I said forty. So, and I, thank you for the inquiry, Margaret.
Okay, so then we're at forty. So we're good. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Sarah, uh, all those opposed? One, two, three, four, five. Uh, Sarah, I don't know how you're voting. I'm sorry if you could let me know. For, against or abstain? Okay, so without, without that, I believe I have to consider that an extension.
I heard Sarah's vote no.
Yeah, I did that. Thank you.
What?
Did anyone get that vote?
No.
She voted no.
Okay, so, so it's a no. Uh, it says.
She put in the chat, she votes no.
Okay, so we are three to six. So that motion is defeated. Anything, any other business before? The board.
No further business.
Okay, then I, uh, with no further business that I would say we adjourn this meeting. Um, and thank you to all of you and thank you to those who are getting on the next meeting ten minutes late.